Tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance, we're joined by Eleanor Tally from Smith Elementary School. Eleanor Tally is a 5th grade Honor Roll student at Smith Elementary. Her favorite subjects are math, science, and reading. She's a big help to her principal, who's here tonight and leading the morning announcements every day. After school, she likes to play softball and basketball and spend time with her family. She's very proud of her mom and dad and loves her brothers and sisters very much. Eleanor wants to go to college in Michigan. Hold the booth. She would like to be a veterinarian or to learn more about science. She also wants to be one of the first women to play on a major league baseball team. Come on up and join us. And who did you come with as my special?
My mom and sister. And my principal.
And now, community and school reflections. Someone like to start? Would anyone like to start for community and school?
I think so. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to say, I had the honor this week of attending, last week, excuse me, of attending the Akron Early College recognition assembly for seniors. My first opportunity to see that school and its students and some of the faculty, especially the principal and two of the teachers, or one of them is the dean, I guess you would refer to him, Mr. O'Neill, and the job that they do with those kids and how proud the parents were, other kids, and their accomplishments are extraordinary. To have that many credit hours going into college is amazing. They must've had to do a lot of hard work. I was kidding with one of the young ladies when she came up to get her medal for the Honor Society, I was as close as I ever got to one of those medals. It was very enlightening and I was very fortunate to be able to attend and see that.
Last week, I got to participate again in the annual reality check at Firestone High School. And if, I don't know if everybody saw it or not, but there was actually an article in the Beacon Journal Betty Lynn Fisher did, and followed two students at Bookdale's reality check. And I thought she did a great job explaining the program and what it does and how kids learn from that, because she shadowed two friends, both with different grade point averages, and therefore each student got a different monthly income to spend on their household budget. And the reality of the one student who did not have as good of a GPA and as good of a attendance record sort of hit, and it was interesting, the two students comparing and contrasting that. So, great program, we got junior achievement to get on board and help with it. They're actually, unfortunately, I'm not going to be in town tomorrow, but they're doing a sort of a wrap-up session tomorrow, since everybody did, I think the reality check programs for this year are done already, but they're doing a wrap-up to, with all the different schools, people who participated, to see how they can continue to improve on that program. So, once again, excellent program. I have to thank everybody who volunteered. We got upwards of 40 people, at least in Firestone, to participate in that, take a day out of their, half a day out of their time to come in and help with that and help the kids learn how to take care of a checkbook register and how to budget. So, thank you.
Friday was a busy day, and I had the honor of being invited. I know Mrs. Sibley was there, as well as a couple folks from the city, and Russ Pry was there as well, to Project Soapbox at the Akron Early College. We were invited to listen to their speakers. Project Soapbox, they take somewhat strong stands and they have to give speeches in order to convince you of a given topic. And the speeches were outstanding, the speakers were brave and bold, and chose topics that really had not just their peers engaged, but I know the adults as well, and we really enjoyed that. So, I wanted to thank them for inviting us out. It's, you know, we often say, "If you invite us, we will come," and we will. There are a lot of people in this community that'll come out when staff and students want to show something off, and they got to show something off, and I was very, very proud of them. Also, Friday evening, the Firestone choirs were involved in state competition. This is the last level of state competition for the choirs, and all three of the choirs were invited to attend. You have to get a certain ranking in order to be invited, and all of them scored the highest possible rating, representing the district very well. And I know this coming week, the band will also be, will be competing for the last time at that highest level. So, congratulations to the choirs and good luck to the bands. And then, also, I wanted to remind board members, if you do not have a full calendar, tomorrow evening at Garfield High School is the PTA Scholarship Awards for the District. And I was encouraged to put that back out to you again. They would love to have as many of us in attendance as possible at that. And last, last time I was here, I had promised, I told you all that I grabbed you all things from the symphony. I brought the copies, and I'll give some to the senior staff as well, of the program that the Firestone students got to participate in, that we got such a nice thank you from the symphony for. I brought those along. That's it.
I'll throw out that I did go to the Akron Roundtable, Mr. Miller and I attended that, which was a very engaging topic. And then, we were fortunate enough to tour the new Firestone in Litchfield, and what an awesome building the students that'll be attending that. It's a fabulous opportunity and it's looking wonderful, so. I remember back to my high school, and I happen to be lucky enough to start in a high school the first year it opened, and boy, what a difference it makes in what you're doing and just how proud you are and how exciting it is. I think those kids are going to love it, so.
Anyone else?
Had an opportunity to represent the school board as the Educational Motivation for Success, which is ENS, which is made up of interfaith plus civic and other organizations. Bishop Joey Johnson is our convener. And one of the things I wanted to emphasize, that we were emphasizing again, Mr. Matthew Devers made a presentation from Summit Education Initiatives, and reminding us to get involved in two things that help our children as it relates to pre-kindergarten awareness and preparation. One is Baroom, B-R-O-O-M, which can be, pull it up on smartphone app, which helps to give all kinds of examples, how our children can learn early on, how to count, shapes, et cetera, while they're doing their daily activity. And that's www.joinbaroom.org. And the other is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, where our children can receive from birth to age five, free books. And you can get in contact with United Way here in Summit County for additional information for that. Again, working in partnership with various organizations, as well as our staff, to help to prepare our children so that they're ready for pre-K and for kindergarten.
I got to participate in a program at University of Akron called Fail Safe Pack-A-Thon. And it was put on by the Excel Center, the Experiential Learning Center, it's relatively new on campus. The reason I bring it up, they also had high school students participate. And we had some high school students, I know Bookdale High School was there, Bookdale CLC was there, represented, they were represented by three students, I think four students actually. And it was a, it was the inaugural one, I know they're going to have another one this fall, they're planning on continuing to do this, but it was 24 hours of entrepreneurial thinking, I guess, for lack of better words, where each individual that came in, I believe there were somewhere between 45 and 50 students, and about 25% of them were high school students from various high schools around Summit County. And every student was there, got, they started out with a bid and pitching a project of their own. And then, the students and faculty there narrowed it down, I believe, to six, awarded six of those students the ability to move forward with their idea. And the neat thing about it was that the students who did not, you know, make it past the first round, they had to go shop themselves to the winners of the first round to make a team, so that's where collaboration started. And it was interesting now how the winning bids, if you will, how they changed from the first, the first bid, if you will, about 8:00 in the evening, spent the night forming their teams, collaborating, honing their presentation, and then 8:00 the next morning, they came back with their presentation, narrowed down to two winners, if you will, and then two not winners. And then, those, the two, top two teams actually got to pick one of the losers to come back, so we had three teams competing. And it was interesting because one of the losers that the two winners picked overtook the two winners to win the whole competition. So, they didn't do a very good job of picking somebody they thought would fail so they could, the top two could continue, but it was neat. The Bookdale High School students, none of them were awarded their first bid, but they were actually part of the second round, the first place team on the second round, which actually ended up being third place in the long run, but it was very interesting how that worked. And I did not stay up for 24 hours, I actually went home and slept and went back the next morning. But it was neat because they had a lot of adults from the community come in to mentor. I was there to talk about risk management with the students and, you know, my quote-unquote entrepreneurial skills, I guess, but whatever that means. It was a great, great program. I hope they continue to include high school students in it as well, because it was, it was an awesome program. It was interesting watching the adrenaline work about 11:00 on Saturday after a lot of them had been up for quite a while, so it was a very, very cool program.
I only have one that I wanted to add, and, you know, we have a lot of great partnerships around the community, especially in the arts, within the arts community. But for some of our students, I attended the Sounds of Akron, which was actually, believe it or not, it was between our, we had a board retreat a week ago, but it was between our last meeting and this meeting, and our Miller South, our students from Miller South from the steel drum band got to perform onstage, of course, with the Akron Symphony Orchestra. They did a fantastic job, and just great to see them showcased as part of an event like that. So, just wanted to add that one in. Are there any other community or school reflections before we move forward? Anything else? All right, we have no requests to address the board, so I think we're here now to recognize the Genius Challenge Team, so I'm going to ask Megan Mannion to come up. And I thought maybe when I walked in, our board president couldn't make it today, so I thought maybe this trophy was to, for me, but it's not. So, I think we're going to find out what it's for, right?
It is. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. James, our distinguished board members, senior staff, and honored guests, and Mr. Pendleton. Artson Stark. The Artson Stark is a 45-year-old nonprofit organization that is committed to integrating the arts with math, which is what we've heard similarly tonight. This is the first year that Akron Public Schools was invited to participate in this Genius Challenge. We had six schools, or six teams representing four different schools go to this challenge, and we won this trophy out of 31 different school districts and teams participating throughout Stark County. Our students worked together to solve a challenge. You will see an example of it on your way out or when you were coming in, of what they had to create. They had to create a freestanding, single-run roller coaster for their marble. So, of course, they took about eight weeks with their coaches to work on this project, and they had to do all of the work. Now, the real challenge is they had to only use materials given in their Genius Challenge box. So, needless to say, that took a great deal of ingenuity, perseverance, teamwork, creative thinking to get that done. In front of each of you as board members, we have created a special challenge box, no worries though. So, we gave you an example on the inner lid of what a typical challenge could look like, but we're going to have you pull out your pink envelope. Top secret. So, this is your challenge if you choose to accept it. We are, you have been given four different supplies. You have been given a payday candy bar, which is to honor you for all your dedication to Akron Public Schools. We have given you kisses for all of your words of encouragement. We have given you kickcats, because even board members and superintendents need a break from time to time. And there is a bottle in emergencies of aspirin, really M&amp;M's, for those long days that you have without lunch. And they are all duct taped, so that was part of the Genius Challenge. So, we are going to bring up our vice president, Patrick Bravo, to introduce our geniuses and their teams.
And we want to congratulate each of the students and, of course, their coaches and the parents for their encouragement, support, and dedication for their child, as well as to the building principal for their leadership. The trophy will travel to school for a week during the month of May, and the NIFSTEMs coach, Emily Butler, will take the trophy home tonight. So, at this time, we do want to call the coaches to the front. We're going to do one team at a time. So, if we could have Jeff Whitehead from Litchfield.
I am obviously not Jeff Whitehead. My name is Jessica Zax, I'm one of the assistant principals at Litchfield, and on behalf of Jeff Whitehead and Diane Floyd, our principal, I would like to recognize two of our outstanding students, Liam Lee and Brian Bragu.
One moment. Sorry. One, two, three. Thank you. And Miss Becky Murray from Resnet.
We actually have two teams, and Mrs. Brady's going to come up with me to shake some hands. I have Tara Brillmeyer. And Leland Vucey. And Seth Singer. Joseph Todd. And Vicki Jean White.
Poor William over there played sun with my baseball, so I'm nudging him. And Miss Brillmeyer's mom happens to be my helper for work, so, small world. And now, we'd like to call up Amy Hughes and Monica Meyer from Cyberlink.
First of all, I'd like to call up Mrs. Maugh, Mrs. Jennifer Maugh, our principal, who volunteered our school for this awesome project. We did have two teams as well, I had a 6th grade team and Amy had a 5th grade team. I'm going to start with Emma Barna. And Kyra Whisperer.
And I'll announce for the registration, another coach, Mrs. Cooper, she also coached the 5th grade team. And then, we had Janiah Goldman. Deanna Spear. And Naomi Bell.
One, two, three. Thank you.
So, before I sit down, I would like to offer some special recognition to Megan Mannion. Megan can't stand this, but I'm going to do it anyways. At the very last minute, I had an unforeseeable family emergency and I could not attend the culminating event down in Canton at the Cultural Center. And Megan, being the former principal of Cyberlink, stepped in immediately, provided rides for students that I had promised to get down there, and it didn't even baden I, it was her first day of spring break, it was all of our first day of spring break. And she did an amazing job filling in for me, my heart was there, they kept me posted with pictures and everything, so Megan, I'd like to present you with the Cyberlink Genius Challenge.
And last but certainly not least, Miss Emily Butler from NIFSTEM.
Our NIFSTEM Genius Team would like to, Coach Amanda Morgan, instructional leader, Jeffrey Cox. Abduraham Malay. Stephanie Streeter. And Maya Tompkins.
All right, it's Vucey over there. Over there where your parents are standing. All right. Your chin. And Jeffrey.
I need you to turn this way.
All right. Okay. Which one's going to be a friend?
One, two, three. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
While they're exiting, I just, you know, congratulations again to all of the teams. Outstanding to be recognized, and I hope, since it was an Artson Stark program, that just because we swept this year, we'll be invited there.
We'll just have more. So, Mr. James has already tried, we left a model out there, so he's tried it, so please give it a whirl.
Next up, we have a presentation from Ms. Carla Sibley for family and community engagement.
So, I get to follow the geniuses, huh?
This is a very quick update on our family and community engagement work here in our district, and there are handouts coming around, two of them, one to PowerPoint, the other a supplemental piece that I'll talk about in just a couple of moments. So, we all start our presentation with our connection to the district focus, and ours in the area of family and community engagement are the priorities you see in the orange box. We're looking to create welcoming school climates through our work, and we want to learn and understand our students beyond academic measures. So, these two priorities are particularly connected to the work we're doing around our cultural competency training, and I'll talk with you about that in just a moment. Focus area three, public engagement, more specifically, engaging our families. There are four priorities that we have decided are important and are evidence-based, and you'll see the four listed here, but what's important to note is what schools have said are important for them to pay attention to. So, for Arnold, Betty Jane, Case, Harris, Portage Path, and Boris, they have said that providing families with information related to child development and creating supportive learning environments are the most important priorities for them. You'll see Arnold on all four of them, but take a look at what schools have, whoops, see, I followed the geniuses. I knew that would be an issue. Take a look at what the schools have said are their priority areas, establishing effective school to home and home to school. Establishing effective school-to-home and home-to-school communication. Strengthening families' knowledge and skills to support and extend learning at home and in the community. And then being resourceful and connecting our students and families to resources. We have 14 family liaisons in our schools, mostly elementary. You'll see the clusters highlighted there. We added one liaison at higher in March of this year. So brand-new coming onboard is a middle school. A number of them in the Bookdale Cluster, East Cluster. Every cluster really represented with family liaisons in the elementary buildings. We have the eight linkage coordinators at the high school level. You'll remember that they are focused on supporting ninth graders who need extra connection and support. And we're going to be doing some work with Mr. Black and the eighth-grade transition program. They provide case management and connection to resources. They navigate for families who are struggling. The work of these 22 folks represents more than 1,300 family contacts for this school year. The family liaisons alone made 750 contacts this school year with families. We are mining that information, what kinds of contacts, who they spoke with, the issues they resolved. And we're going to tie it back to our evaluation. I can tell you that 40% of the contacts made were in the area of attendance follow-up and parent concerns, connecting families to resources. Starting in April and May of last year, we hosted our first Family Academy pilot. You may recall Food as Fuel for Learning. What I want to highlight with our academies are the partners that we are working with to make these things happen. All of our academies are based on themes that families have said they want to know more about or community needs assessments that have been conducted by the Summit County Health District and the partner hospitals in our community. We know that in the ZIP codes 44320 and 307, you've heard Reverend Walker speak to some of the concerns in the community. In those ZIP codes, we have an issue with healthy lifestyles, eating well, providing good food to your family, and finding it at a reasonable cost. So this particular academy was hosted at the SUMA Center for Health Equity. And cooking demonstrations took place in the kitchen. And families were connected to child nutritionists who could help provide more information on how to eat healthy and how it supports learning. Our second one was held at the Reach Center. Active Kids = Active Learners. Again, ZIP codes 44307, 320. Worried about childhood diabetes, obesity, things that are happening as a result of inactive lifestyles. So we're focusing on providing the kind of information that can support healthy living by being active. We engage our physical education staff to support our families with learning activities, exercise, jazzercise, things that they can do at home to support an active lifestyle. And if you had a chance to attend our December program, we had a parent actually talk about the benefits from her attendance at these two sessions and how the information was so important for her to get to stop the diabetes that was taking place in her family, to change the behavior of the people and the young folks she's raising in her home and older adults in her family. So that really is what it's all about. We wrapped up the school year with a site-based academy at Helen Arnold, capitalizing on the after-school time. This one had more than 70 students and families participate for a two-week session. And you can see the partners who collaborated with us on that particular academy. SUMA, Children's Hospital, the American Heart Association, Patty Larland, and others, Minority Behavior Health as well. We wrapped up in February with the Show Me the Money, which was a college and career readiness academy focused on completing the FAFSA and scholarship application searches for young people who attended. We worked with Yvonne Culver in the College and Career Access Caucus and served 78 students and families who were at risk of not meeting the March 1 deadline for FAFSA. And so having the University of Akron Kids Day and Stark State there to help support those students with their FAFSA and their scholarship application searches were very valuable. And I know Mrs. Walsh was able to attend that one and share it at a previous board meeting. The other piece of the work we're doing to engage our families and to be sure that we have the kind of welcoming climate we wish for all of our buildings to have, so that we are supporting students and families at the highest level. I like to draw attention to the way we describe urban students. What's different than what we see often when we describe urban students? At Promise. So we always open up with this as our definition of the work and the purpose of our training to increase awareness and understanding of urban students at promise. We know we're an urban district, but we have to start to think of our young people as not at risk, but at promise. Because it changes the way we serve them, the way we talk about them, and the things we put in place to support their success. Why cultural competency training? Because our population of students is more diverse than ever before. We are here to increase awareness and understanding and to improve customer service and communications. And ultimately, we want our students to have the self-worth, to be fully engaged, and a sense of purpose that will drive them forward in the future. Our cultural competency training work is gaining momentum. We have some attention from Ohio Aid through Dr. McWilliams' work. And we've had Lorraine City Schools come to see what we're doing and to ask for assistance in building their own team of trainers to go throughout their district. This year, we trained, was it 100% Karen G. J.??
Yes.
Of new staff. I asked for it. Dr. McWilliams pulled a team together, and we quickly ran out of capacity to get it all done. But we got it all done. 100% of new hires now going through this training, as well as schools and community organizations requesting that we come and provide our content. We asked our families how we were doing in our district most recently. And I know that's a little blurry, but I'll try to read it. Summit Education Initiative analyzed 2,500 surveys for us from 28 schools in the fall, just before winter break. And you'll see some of the things that came out of the survey. 84% of our families are feeling good about what we're doing. They feel comfortable at school. They like the staff that they work with. The adults in the school expect my child to do his or her best, speaking to student motivation and aspirations. Here, you'll see that 53% prefer phone calls as their number-one choice for receiving school information. That 10% prefer to get email communications. 6% prefer to get text messages. So again, this is only 10%, a little more of the families that we serve in our district. But it gives us a good representative sampling of what our families think about the work we're doing in our district. Just wanted to show you some of the community connections that we have in our district. We still support Akron Reads. There are 16 businesses, community and faith-based organizations who are tutoring second graders in our district. And second graders was chosen by our literacy office as the target grade level to support. There was a time when we weren't really sure about the impact of Akron Reads, but we now know that after 10 tutoring sessions, and this is hot off the press from Summit Education Initiative, after 10 tutoring sessions, an Akron Reads student gains 12 percentile points on national reading assessment versus those that do not participate in Akron Reads. We're only one part of the pie. There are a lot of other things that are contributing to the success of students. But we're looking to see whether or not we're making a difference. 42% of the Akron Reads students who are most at risk are reading closer to the national average than those who are not receiving that support. You can see the partners that participate in the Akron Reads program. The United Way of Summit County is now focusing on family engagement and supporting students and families in our schools. You mentioned the Dolly Pardon Initiative. They also have what's called bookathons. And this past year, they chose Barbara Kraus and Portage Path in March, actually. They're going to host Stuff the Bus events throughout the summer and even a community baby shower. They also head up our Bridges Summit County Collaborative. And they are a major partner in our APS family engagement work. We'll be approving, you'll be approving a grant today from the United Way of Summit County. The Akron Zoo Backpack Adventure. You see the list of partnerships that make that happen every year. We serve about 6,000 students and parents over the two days, K through five backpacks and a free trip to the zoo. And then some of the community boards that we're represented on, that I attend, just to give you an idea of some of the other collaborative work going on in our district.
Yes, sir.
First, I just want to commend you on the partnerships and tying them back and bringing them here, because I know that we're always, you know, asking and we're soaking up the information. And I know Mr. Otterman has asked before, you know, what are the partnerships? And so you've done a good job of listening to us here. But the data, that's really powerful data. What else are we doing with that, or how are we using that to inform what we're doing moving forward?
The family data?
Yeah. Is there anything we can help with in that?
Yeah, well, the first thing is to share it with all departments, but it is also in the superintendent's hands to help inform his decisions moving forward. Especially the communication piece, I think, was an aha moment for us.
Yeah, and Mr. Walker mentioned Summit Education Initiative earlier, and Mr. Devers, and of course Darren Weimer. But I mean, that's really powerful data, I think, that you guys were able to collect. I hope you make good use of it.
We certainly intend to.
Yes, sir.
6,000 backpacks were distributed to students and families. I'm just trying to figure, do we have a, is that more? Kindergarten, pre-K, where is that?
You know, we invite K through five to the zoo each year. And once we invite them, because of the magnitude of that program, we make sure that when they get there, they're going to get their entrance pass and get the opportunity to trek through the zoo. Now, I'll tell you what happens. I have a second grader, but I'm also going to bring my preschooler, and I'm going to bring relatives from other areas as well, and we serve them all. So the number of our kids who come, the majority, the vast majority, 90% are Akron Public School students. But we don't turn anyone away.
Couple of questions, Carl. How do, what's the criteria for assigning the family liaisons?
So we've worked with our school improvement office under the direction of Dr. Hoynes first, and we're continuing discussions with Keith Lipton to identify those schools who are Title I, who have assigned dollars to support parent involvement, is what Title I calls it.
Yes. The specific percentage chance of going towards parents.
We look at the school's ranking academically. We look at principal requests and need. And we're targeting elementary first because Mary Kelly would have it that way. And we have priority schools that we're looking at for the next round of family liaisons should funding become available.
Second question on the data. I was just curious if you can add, you know, preferred phone calls as number-one choice. Did we differentiate between a human and an all-call, or is that just?
I did not differentiate. When SEI created the survey, there were options that they could choose from, and the vast majority chose. Yeah, I did not differentiate, but that's something we can look at the next time we survey. Any other questions? Thank you.
As you're leaving, and you gave it into the hands of the superintendent, 84% of our families, of those who responded to the survey, liked what we're doing as a school initiative. But what we get is like 94% of complaints about the district. So how do we move that perception to where it ought to be? That we are a good district, that we, that our parents support our district and support what we do. Our students, the superintendent has said to me and others, when we get to the issue of discipline, 92, am I right? Or I may be wrong.
80%.
80%.
Have no discipline.
Have no discipline. Zero. And it's just that few that, and some are repeat persons that make us look mad. But here, we have data that says otherwise, done by, not by us, but a different group that has done credible work throughout county. How can we change the image? How can we get that out there? It's like when there's a fight, everybody comes running and get all the media attention. But when you have students like we had tonight, who do an excellent job, is any of that going to be on the paper? We won. We went to Stark County and we beat them. And their own program. Is that going to be highlighted? And we would not have known unless one parent had contacted Mr. Miller. So all that good news, how can we get it out there to share? You put it in superintendent's name.
How can we make the louder people be the happy people? That would be the, that's part of the problem, isn't it? And as a board, there's nobody who's going to send us an email, rarely. I will say that Ms. May, who was here when I couldn't be here and led the pledge, that was one of the rare times in my career as a school board member that I ever got a letter that was, "Thank you so much for all that this district has done for my child." But 85% or 84% of the people do feel like those people that don't write those emails.
Any other questions? If not, I'll move on to approval of the regular meeting minutes.
If not, I'll move on to approval of the regular meeting minutes.
Some move.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Abstaining as I was.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Moving on to superintendent's recommendations, personnel recommendations, Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 32 personnel recommendations and one additional recommendation on supplement number one. In this supplemental item, the wrong fund number was used. That fund number, instead of being 001-000, or general fund, it should be Fund 439-1633, which is our early learning program teacher wages. With that correction, these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from numbers 29 and 30.
I'll abstain from number 27. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes. Abstaining on 31 and 32.
Second. And the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion.
Excuse me, we didn't complete the whole table.
Oh, did you? Mr. Bravo, Mansfield, Otterman.
You never got to me.
I didn't get to you?
No.
Okay.
Yes, it is yes.
Okay. Did you have any extensions? Did you have any extensions?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. I marked you yes, I just skipped right over you.
All right. Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Just point out item number 10 that Carla pointed out to us in her presentation is on the consent agenda, $10,000 for the United Way. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion for the consent agenda? If not, roll call. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
And business affairs recommendations.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 22 business affairs recommendations. There is a change in item number one. The contract for the IP flexible reach services for network services to Blue Bridge, new 60 months, has been changed to 36 months, and the annual cost for that contract was reduced from $50,000 to $25,000, and therefore the not-to-exceed grand total of $824,000 is reduced to $799,000. Also, there is one additional business affairs recommendation on supplement number two, which you have. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Some move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any questions or discussion? I'll just point out, I had a discussion with Reverend Paul over, a lot of this is the E-rate costs, and actually, a majority of what we're approving tonight actually gets reimbursed to the school district. Any other questions or discussion? If not, roll call please. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Well, the items I was going to talk about were already mentioned by board members, like the tour of Firestone. I do have some sad news since our last regular board meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the death of one of our students, Jamar Douglas Jr., who was in the early learning program at Kraus. He passed away on Saturday, or Sunday, April 17.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There is no president's report tonight, other than Bruce sends his wishes and regrets that he couldn't be here. Treasures report.
Two items tonight to review. The first quick item is on your finance report, page nine. Just wanted to draw your attention that now that the district's passed its cash reserve policy, we started to include, and we'll track that month-to-month in coordination and forecast. So if you have any comments about that or different information, I think we listed all of the benchmarks there to try to capture, to put into perspective, you know, out through years, what does our cash balance look like, and how does that relate to our colleagues and best practice? The second item is our annual audit. Annually, the state of Ohio performs an audit. That audit takes up to six months with them being on-site. The annual audit helps evaluate our financial performance relative to our internal policies and board policies. Like I said, they were here on-site for about six months. Not only my 15 staff members dedicated to, but your administrative staff around the room all-participate in that, whether it be a general fund or the special federal fund audit, which had 30-plus million dollars and maybe 25 additional hands on staff looking at those documents. This year, I'm pleased to report that we received an unqualified opinion. It's the highest opinion awarded by the state. Basically, this means the audit was free of major accounting and procedural errors, and this is our internal financial grade card. They looked at over $500 million. There were no material weaknesses. There were no findings. There were, and always are, a few management letter comments that we take very seriously to improve our processes. And if I could just take a moment to shout out to my staff, they processed 6,000 physical payroll checks, 76,000 payroll direct deposits, about 13,000 physical accounts payable checks. We now, for the first time ever, have electronic accounts payable, direct deposits to reimburse people, so that's cutting down on a lot of postage and operational efficiencies, about 5,000 there, about 5,000 W-2, which makes us one of the largest employers in Akron, 433 1099s of those vendors who consult with us, and a little over 10,000 purchase orders. So I think that's a pretty stellar audit to be on-site with the state six months and receive that, and then the staff, finance office, staff, and administrative teams to be commended. That's my report.
Good work. Committee reports. Legal, contracts, and board calls.
Okay. Presenting for the third reading and approval, Policy 5223 revised, the release time for newest instruction. Policy 9270 revised, the equivalent education outside of the home, outside of the schools, parentheses, homeschooling, and Policy 5200 revised attendance. Do we accept those as presented?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the policies as read. Any questions or discussion? If not, roll call please. Ms. Otterman?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Finance and capital management.
Yeah, briefly, just an update on our investments for the Akron Public Schools. Would like to highlight one statement in our investment review. Basically, it states, "We will continue to invest each portfolio to meet the specific investment parameters in order to minimize risk and to maximize interest earnings." There are constraints on where we can invest our funds. Though previously, we weren't earning a whole heck of a lot of money on our investments, we have increased it quite a bit. Just to highlight on our general fund, the yield remained the same at 1.13% as we move forward. Our construction funds, the yield has actually increased from 60, 0.65% to 0.71%, and the yield on our permanent improvement has remained the same at 0.82%. In the past, we were, I think we were gathering about 0.25% on everything, if my memory is correct. So right now, we're projecting close to $500,000 in investment income over the next 12-month period. So we will continue to monitor that and report out as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Instructional policy and student achievement.
Just a brief update. We wanted to report out that the Ohio testing, Ohio State testing is taking place currently, and Ellen's got a number for it. 98% of our students have completed the literacy portion, the language arts reading literacy portion. That was given, that was begun last week, I believe. And there are, a lot of it is taking place this week, and we had a great report on our technology, that the board's invested a lot of money, and also great commendations for Mr. Lawson on the fantastic work for the technology team in making things happen, because we're hearing very good things. So, thank you.
You guys did it.
Your implementation, so.
I know my technology skills, so I was at the U.
Man, I think we have math this week, right?
Yeah.
So lots of good sleep and a good breakfast, and yeah. Anything else from instructor? All right. With that, any unfinished business? Any new business?
I'd like one little thing. I would like to wish Mr. Pendle an belated birthday, and Mr. Bravo an early birthday.
Thanks. Brownie points so awarded. All right, with that, we do have a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Divise Code 121.22-G4 for the purpose of preparing for negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. There is a motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, roll call please. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Otterman?
Yes.
And business affairs recommendations.
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 22 business affairs recommendations. There is a change in item number one. The contract for the IP flexible reach services for network services to Blue Bridge, new 60 months, has been changed to 36 months, and the annual cost for that contract was reduced from $50,000 to $25,000, and therefore the not-to-exceed grand total of $824,000 is reduced to $799,000. Also, there is one additional business affairs recommendation on supplement number two, which you have. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Some move.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations.